I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And we, I would like to wish Leanna a happy birthday. And another person in the audience, not to be named, it's her birthday as well, so happy birthday to her, too. Okay, item number three, public comments.
Just think World War II.
We do watch the video.
That's right. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, hearing no public comment. We will move on to item number four, approved minutes from the April 5th, 2016 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item number five, first selectman's report. It's a short one for today. Met with, met again with the advisors from William Blair to discuss the upcoming bond refunding and prepare for next steps. We have also started to put together our presentation strategy for our upcoming bond rating review with S&amp;P, which we project to be the third week of May in Boston. Attended several CCM meetings regarding current legislation in Hartford that would be problematic for towns and cities. We actually got an update this morning, two bills that we had concerns with were both killed. One had to do with essentially workers' compensation for an emergency service personnel who might see something dramatic going on, essentially stress, post-traumatic stress. So that was one that the municipalities had been fighting. And the second was a bill that had to do with cutting of the interest rate on delinquent taxes. So we fought those and were successful. Neither of those bills made it out of committee. We had several meetings over the last week or so with how to handle Seymour's animal control situation in the near future. Discussions with Woodbridge are ongoing. I also met with representative from the volunteer group in Seymour to get their input and feedback, and I also reviewed another potential local option. I would expect to have something for the board to review, discuss, and decide on in the next few weeks. I was honored again to throw out the first pitch for the George Day Humble Little League Baseball and Softball opening day this past weekend, which is always a fun event. And then finally, the governor's updated budget was released last week. This budget is designed to close the over $900 million budget shortfall for fiscal year 2017. The town of Seymour had its revenues cut by $832,938 from the original proposal the governor presented in February. The cuts came from two places, the first cut being $419,615 from our ECS funding, and the second cut being $413,323 from the new MRSA account. ECS is the education cost-sharing account. And the MRSA account is the new fund that was put together when the sales tax was increased a quarter point. That money was supposed to be spread out amongst the towns and cities, and based on the governor's proposal, that will be going away in year one, so we'll never even have seen that money. The town does have some money built into the budget to absorb either a one-time cut in revenue or one-time spike in expenses each year through our mill rate stabilization account. So we should be able to absorb between $300,000 and $400,000 of cuts. That's kind of what we projected we might see from the state. But at this point, we'll wait to see what the final outcome is, which we're expected to know in the next few weeks. Session closes May 5th. However, the Speaker of the House has threatened to not put a budget forward until the very last day, which in turn could drag this process out into the summer. Governor in turn has threatened to call the entire legislature back into session the very next day. So we'll see how this, how this all pans out. Okay, with that, I'll close my first selectman's report. And we'll move on to item number six. Item number six, before we open it, it says, "Discussion, take possible action regarding approval of blight and noise ordinance changes." But at this point, I'd like to add to the agenda a change to item number six. So it will say, "Discussion and take possible action regarding approval of blight and adult entertainment ordinance." So can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. So next item on the agenda is discussion, take possible action regarding approval of blight and adult entertainment ordinance. Okay, so we have discussed these two ordinances for quite some time. First, at the ordinance committee level, we've had two public hearings to get feedback from residents with regards to that. We've all had an opportunity to weigh in on it. We had discussions at our last meeting. So the question is now, do we want to move these two ordinances forward? So are there any questions, comments, or concerns at this point with regards to either? Rich, anything you'd like to add? All right, so then I'll entertain a motion then to approve the updated anti-blight ordinance as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question about enforcement. I understand we have Mike, you know, enforcing the different, you know, parts of the statute, the ordinance, sorry, the ordinance. But what what option, do the police have any options at all with regard to it?
In regards to what?
Enforcement of the ordinance.
I defer that to town council.
Well, here's, here's my thought, here's my question. Bill King lives across the street from me.
Don't say resident's name. Resident A lives across the street.
I'm sorry, I have a police officer who lives across the street from me. And if he walked into my front yard, he could see what's going on in the backyard. So he has no authority to do anything about it? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on, Rich?
Rich, that's usually a separation of authority, right? They wouldn't like step on a town's authority to enforce an ordinance usually, right? Could that be infringement on?
All right, and just, Rich, a procedural question. We approved this tonight, these go into effect 21 days from tomorrow. With regards to the publishing of these in the newspaper, is there anything we can do? The concern I have is the publishing, excuse me, the publishing of the adult-oriented ordinance? I mean, this could cost, yeah. So is there any way that we could publish an abridged version and direct people to a PDF on a website? Or something like that? I mean, I know that's something the legislature has been looking at, but didn't take any action on.
Most likely not.
If we were, we just did a pull-out invoices for community services, which I want to say we paid $1,500 for, I believe. Can we do something like that for this? So with that being said, can we put an effective date on these ordinances to give us an opportunity to do that? So can we say, we'll put these ordinances in effect as an example on June 1st, 2016? As opposed to just saying 21 days? Okay.
Beyond 21 days.
Beyond 21 days.
Have a date certain, we could put it out two years from now.
You have to add it to the ordinance.
Correct. So we'd have to amend the motion? Okay, so Karen, well, well, under discussion of this, does anyone have an issue with having the ordinances go into effect on Wednesday, June 1st? Which will give us time to, yeah, I'd rather, and Roy and I were talking about the publishing of this ordinance. It's going to be a
In terms of the publication,
A doozy. Voices, which now goes to every town, every town, every resident supposedly. They told us that at the handout, this, but this is new.
It does not have to go to every resident.
Right.
Does it have a substantial circulation?
Define substantial. Of 9,000 houses, does that have to be six? Thousand houses, what, 50% of the houses? Okay. I would agree with that. Then everyone gets voices now because it's mailed to the house. So, all right, we'll work on that and then we'll confirm that with you. All right, so Nicole and Karen, are you comfortable amending your motion to state that this ordinance will go into effect on Wednesday, June 1st?
Yes.
All right, so we have amended a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Okay, next is the adult-oriented establishment ordinance. Again, this is the ordinance that we modeled after Milford. Milford, as we all know, just recently had a recent win in the Second Circuit, so that this ordinance has been upheld in the court system, so we know that it is a strong ordinance. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the adult-oriented establishment ordinance as presented and state that it will go into effect on Wednesday, June 1st, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by, we'll give Karen this one, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. All right, so Rich, we'll have, you can clean these up, we'll get them to the clerk, and then Roy and I will work on everything else. Okay, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding five-day work week. Okay. Had discussions with all the employees, with the unions, kind of going back and forth on what will work, what won't work, based on the confines of the contract. We have to remain within a 35-hour work week, which is specifically stated in the contract. So what I'm going to put forward to you tonight for approval is a schedule as following, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, which is an eight-and-a-half-hour day. Employees will have a 45-minute lunch. Fridays, 8:00 to 12:00, which will be a four-hour day, there will be no lunch. That will be a 35-hour work week. For each Friday holiday, employees will receive 4.25 hours of vacation time. The two holidays that we know of on Fridays each year are Thanksgiving and Good Friday. So that would make up an additional floating holiday. Those would stay in effect as long as this schedule was in effect. And then each year, we would look to see if there was a Fourth of July or some other holiday on a Friday, and we would address that accordingly. The new schedule will go into effect July 1st, 2016 with the new fiscal year. Again, these are my recommendations. And then I'm requesting that we make official the hiring of the town hall floater position. We make that position effective 5/1/2016. Money budgeted for that position, or money has been budgeted in the fiscal year 17 budget, and money has been identified in the fiscal year 16 budget. So those are my recommendations. Again, I met with the employees, we had conversations, I allowed them to weigh in. The vast majority of the employees seemed very, I guess, comfortable will be the word I'd use with this schedule. I wouldn't say they are thrilled, but they are reasonably comfortable with it. We looked at some other alternatives, having a five-day schedule, 8:00 to 5:30, but it just wouldn't have worked out. We would have had too many departments that would have been run by one person five weeks out of the year, and any sickness or anything that happened would essentially leave departments closed. So that schedule would not have worked. So this is my recommendations. I'll open it up to you for discussion, and then we'll make a decision going forward. So, Karen?
My question is this. There are certain times of the year where, for example, the, the tax office needs to be opened. Is there going to be any adjustment so that people who want to come into town hall and pay their taxes can do that? Or is the, is the, but is the office going to be subject to sort of a, whatever you want to call it, a routine schedule, a routine?
Routine schedule.
Yeah.
If, if anything, this would add Friday, where currently town hall is not open on Fridays. Folks cannot pay their taxes on Friday. They now have the ability to do so.
Okay, but my question is, the people who work in the assessor's office or the, the tax office, are they going to be, you know, scheduled?
They'll work the exact same hours that we're talking about. There'll be no additional hours, unless we wanted to add additional hours and pay them overtime. And we'd have to negotiate that with the
That's, that's my question.
So if you wanted to have a full day as an example on Fridays, during January and July, we would have to pay four and a half hours of overtime for each employee. Because by contract, they work 35 hours. Makes sense?
But I mean, people could come in to pay their taxes.
Not after, not after the hours listed, there's no one here. They can go online at that point and pay taxes. Or they can mail it to the lockbox. So they have three options. They can pay in person, they can mail it to the lockbox, or they can pay online.
Okay, this is my age talking. I didn't know you could pay online.
Credit card or debit card? You're only 21, right? 21, 21's wrong. Okay, what other questions? Comments, thoughts?
Sounds reasonable. So that's only 35?
No, that's, that's 38. 38, and then you deduct 45 minutes for four days, three hours for lunch. So it turns into 35. They get 45-minute unpaid lunches, Monday through Thursday. I mean, it's an hour now, correctly, an hour?
I knew it was going to be abused tonight.
Right, so it's 35. Everyone's comfortable with this?
I mean, 8 o'clock is a reasonable time, because if you wanted to do something, you'd always take time from work. You'd have to get, you know, take personal time or vacation or whatever you have. And you can come and, like Karen's hypothetical, you could do your taxes and then get out of here and get to work.
I think the initial reasoning, and I wasn't on the board way back when, I don't think Ann Marie was on the board, that's how long ago it was, was that, you know, being open 8:00 to 5:30 gave folks the opportunity, either before work or after work, to come in and transact business, and speaking to the clerk's office and Leanna can certainly jump in on this. There seems to be a lot of people here at 8 o'clock waiting to transact, get something done, and then they take off and get to work for 9. Doesn't seem to be the case at, you know, 5:00 or 5:30. It's, it's the morning, so I think
Because there may be traffic concerns or childcare or whatever.
So I think we're better off with the, the 8 o'clock, as opposed to the 5:30 and the other end. Yeah. You've been here a long time, huh? You and the dinosaur. All right, so now, Rich, we have two things. Do we need to do each, the changing of the schedule as one motion, and then the hiring of the town hall floater as two? Or can we do it both wrapped into one, and I just read it all off? What is your? Yeah, it'd be hard to do the five-day schedule without the floater. Okay. All right, so this is going to be a long motion, so we're going to get your, get your fingers ready. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to move the town of Seymour, hold on, Karen, to a five-day work week, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:30, with the employees getting a 45-minute lunch, and Friday from 8:00 to 12:00 with no lunch. The schedule will commence on July 1st, 2016 with a new fiscal year. The town will hire a town hall floater position effective May 1st, 2016, which has been budgeted for in the fiscal year 2017 budget, and money has been identified for the rest of the fiscal year 2016. For each Friday holiday, employees will receive 4.25 hours of vacation time, and that will be in effect as long as this schedule is in effect. Is that okay, Rich? Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any further discussion? That makes sense?
Can they roll those vacation days over?
They can, to a point, if
It's capped, right?
Well, yeah, it's capped, but if they have extenuating circumstances, they can roll their vacation over. It has to be used by the end of August. So if
Okay, so it's not a June 30th, they give an extra month to
No, like the assessor as an example, he had issue this year with reevaluation, with the screw-up with the MV, the screw-up with the grant list, not his fault, but information being disseminated down, he couldn't take vacation time. He's going to have four or five extra days. He has to roll those over and use those in the summer. So it's an individual request each person makes, depending on situation. You know, if Rory said, "I want to roll my vacation time over because I didn't have time," I would probably say no to that.
So you're the ultimate, you know, with that.
Yeah, yeah. But Rory uses all his vacation time, don't worry about that. Okay, no other questions, comments? Everybody's comfortable? Everybody's good? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding Quaker Farms Communication Tower. We have Tom Amy, our emergency management director, as well as our chairman of our communications commission. Him and Rich have put this together, so I don't know who's going to speak, Rich, you or Tom?
The town of Oxford was being up some years ago to allow us to set our equipment on that tower. There was never, to the best of our knowledge, a signed lease document related to the addition of our equipment on that tower. Crown Castle purchased, which acquired that tower and then paid it to the town. These documents that reported charge to that, to the town of Seymour. I mean, we passed three of these, if you recall, about a month ago. We held this one back because I wrote a letter to Crown Castle for the purpose of he had thought that the space was free, that is public safety space that was designated, if you will, by the United States of America Civil. Crown Castle got back to Tommy, and we had to confirm that. So we have our space on the tower with a formal written document. So we have something that we can just not drive and do.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution, then we can ask questions or make comments. Whereas the town of Seymour has placed certain communications equipment on a certain cell tower located at 85 Quaker Farms Road, Oxford, Connecticut, and whereas CCATT LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, also known as Crown Castle, has acquired the site, now therefore be it resolved that W. Kurt Miller First Selectman is hereby authorized to execute a certain First Amendment to sublease agreement with Crown Castle on behalf of the town of Seymour. I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Motion by Len, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to go out of order and skip down to item number 11, which is appointments. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, appointments. And we have two people here that are, I think, waiting to be appointed, so I don't want them to have to sit through executive session if they don't choose to. So Wendy Rossi, Friends of the Broad Street Park Committee, it's a new appointment, it's a two-year term. It expires 4/19/2018. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Rich Demko, Conservation Commission, new appointment, it's a four-year term, expires 4/19/2020. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Congratulations and thank you very much, you two. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go back into order to item number eight. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Al. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Actually, ironically, I said eight, it should be item number nine. So we're going to go into executive So we're gonna go into executive session now to discuss a WPCA claim? Pending claim. Tataro. So at this point, we're going to invite Town Council Richard Beterla into executive session. So entertain a motion that we go into executive session at 8:32 p.m. Motion by Nicole, second by Al.
7:30.
What did I say?
8:30.
I'm sorry, 7:32. Apologize. Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes seven zero.